You're recording.
All right, great. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, March 9, 2021 Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please all stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, I do not have any condolences to read, but I'd like to just have a moment of silence for any veterans or first responders who have passed. Thank you. Just want to remind everyone that the meeting is being aired live and recorded. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GL 38, paragraph 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. The meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. Right, moving on to approval of minutes from the February 23, 2021 meeting. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
Nothing.
Mr. Souza?
No, sir.
Any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton? Oh, so I'm sorry. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Hey, moving on to announcements from the president. We don't have any announcements. Proclamations, we do not have one. Moving to citizens' open forum. If there are any citizens who would like to speak, we ask that you keep it to three minutes and please state your name and your street for the record. Mrs. Hunt, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Marilyn Kenny Hunt, East 80 Austin Street, and speaking as your town clerk tonight, I just wanted to give you an update on the upcoming annual town election. So, the last day for voters, anyone who are tuned in to register to vote, is going to be April 5th. We'll be in the office from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM that day to take any new registrations. The ballot, as of yesterday, is set unless there are any withdrawals, which would have to happen by March 24th. The election will happen on Saturday, April 24th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, 166 Mount Prospect Street, the Mitchell at the Middle School, the regular place people are used to voting. Absentee ballots will be available around April 1st, as soon as we can get them to the printer and get them back in. And we're waiting on the Senate to see if they will pass the bill that allows the early vote options to continue. Right now, they're good until March 31st, but we don't know if they're going to continue on through some of the town elections. So I'll let you know who is on the slate or on the ballot. We have, for Council District 1, Eric Moore. For Council District 2, Kevin Perry. For Counselor at Large, Dennis Gallagher. And for the two-year continuation term or being filled term, for Council District 5, Peter Colambodis. For the Bridgewater-Ranham School District, we have, from Bridgewater, Michael Dolan, Timothy Fitzgibbons, and Jason Hammond. And from Ranham, we have Louis Anthony Gelfey, Rachel R. King, and Laura Conrad. I think if anyone is interested, we will be pull names out of a hat for the contested races to see where people go on the ballot. So, we will be doing that on the 19th of March at 3:45. There are three seats open for the Library Board of Trustees, and no one pulled papers for those. There is also a non-binding question that the council has put on the ballot, and honestly, just, we suspect in our office that that is going to be the thing that pulls the most voters to the polls. And I'm sure that the council is familiar with that, maybe I'll just say it for any public who might be watching, that the non-binding question says, "Will public support allowing retail sales of recreational marijuana?" Will public support allow retail sales of recreational marijuana in Bridgewater? Are they supporting or not supporting that? So I think that's all I have to say. I just wanted to make sure the public was well-informed, and I hope many people will come join us at this election. Thank you.
Does anyone else who would like to speak at citizens' open forum? And I don't see anyone, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. We do not have any appointments. I have 7:09. I think we'll pause here for one minute before we start the continuation of the hearing. Just slated for 7:10. And I'll be running off of official AT&amp;T time. Unless there's an objection. I have the time at 7:10. I will open the meeting for petition P 2021-004, new lodging house license, A for South Street, Norma Jean Bagley and William F. Saber, DBA, the South Street House. Mr. Dutton, do you see the applicants on?
I do not see the applicants by name, but I would, if they are here, I would give them an opportunity to show themselves. I do not see the applicant.
Um. Okay. What I'd like to do, if it pleases the council, I think it's very important for the applicants to be here. I know there were a lot of questions that I think we, you know, we still need to get answers from, from the applicants as well. I'd entertain a motion to continue this hearing until date certain first meeting in May of the town council, so we have time to get answers and things of that nature. So I got him. Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any comment? Questions?
I'd just like to make sure that the town is moving forward with making sure that we're staying in compliance with all zoning, building permits, et cetera, that are going on there. You know, I've heard things, and you know, hearsay is hearsay, so what, what, you know, I'm not putting 100% stock in it, but, you know, let's, let's make sure that the, we get to a resolution on this issue that makes sense for everyone. So I'm all in favor of just continuing it on to get to that date.
Okay, Mr. Souza, any comments or questions?
No, just what Mr. Fitzgibbons said. I agree with that.
Okay, any other counselors, any questions or comments? Seeing done, this requires a roll call vote.
Excuse me, Mr. President, did you, did you pick a time? Did you do a time certain or just a date certain?
Uh, I was looking for a date, yeah, same time, first town council meeting in Met.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'll make that motion, Ms. Holberg.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Secondly, you need it.
Thank you.
All righty, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Okay. Moving on to license transactions. Give me one sec to get my paperwork here. Okay. Petition P 2021-008, new common vic license, Matt Wood, DBA Restoration Coffee, 23 Central Square. I will, Mr. Dutton, any comments on this?
Certainly no objection to this. This is the same space that the better being occupied until it was, it closed down, so we look forward to Restoration Coffee being a presence on Central Square, certainly.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Any questions, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Is the applicant here? If not, that's fine.
I do not see the--
It doesn't seem--
Yeah, it doesn't seem-- No, I looked earlier, but thank, thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. I don't think he slipped in.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I'd just be interested in what, what actually drove the business to come into, into the common and into that space, because hopefully, we could make, take some learnings from that. That was my, gonna be my only question, but I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Chase, I saw you for a second. Any questions or comments?
No, not at all. Thank you.
All right, any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
And if Matt Wood is watching on Facebook or, or any other medium, we want to wish you good luck, and thank you very much for bringing more good coffee in town. All right, moving on to presentations. Police Department update, Police Chief Chris Delmonte. Mr. Dutton, anything before we turn it over to the chief?
No, normally, I would introduce the chief, but I don't think the chief needs much of an introduction in this group, so, so I did, did ask if he would attend tonight. He graciously accepted that offer, and so I will defer to him to talk about all things police.
Chief Delmonte, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Town Manager Dutton and Council President George. So I'll try to be brief with you. There are some important things to discuss. The first thing I didn't want to mention to you in our update is, we had, and I appreciate you taking a moment of silence earlier, we had a retired officer, Michael Battello, who retired in 2014, passed yesterday. He served for 35 years in this community, and so I just wanted to mention that before I continue on with the update.
Mr. George, can we just take another moment of silence for Officer Battello?
I think that is appropriate. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and thoughts and prayers are with his family as well. So, just to give you an update on where we are, so our current authorization for the police department is 42 sworn police officers. We currently have 41. We have one officer who's in the police academy. We won't see him until probably sometime in the fall. We do have two professional, full-time professional staff people. We have three police cadets and one part-time mental health and substance abuse clinician. The complement of the department, that number is comprised, that's the entire complement. We do have a couple of officers part-time that are specials, that typically retired officers. But the rank structure is, we have a chief, a captain, two lieutenants, one detective sergeant, five patrol sergeants, and 32 police officers who are responsible not only for answering all the calls for service, but also serve as the staff for the primary answering, answering point 911 and dispatch. And I will tell you, that number also encompasses officers who serve in a variety of capacities. So, we have a court prosecutor, we have a school resource officer, we have K-9 handlers, motorcycle officer, some like SWAT operators. So guys, our personnel do a variety of things other than just serve as patrol officers, and, and as you probably know, the Bridgewater Police Department is a fully accredited police department by the Mass Police Accreditation Commission, and we have been since 2016, most recently being re-accredited in 2019. So, the town manager did give me a couple of, of ideas and things that may be of interest, which I really appreciate.
Chief?
Sir.
And I apologize for interrupting, and this is more to the present. Are we gonna do questions during or after the presentation?
Usually do them at the end, Tim. I'd like to let the chief go through his presentation.
Thank you.
And so the first one is the BPD outbuilding. As you know, there's a structure that's being built on the property of 220 Pleasant Street. That structure is intended to serve as a vehicles and equipment, bicycles, barricades, a secure storage facility, really cold storage. And that is being primarily constructed by the Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School, the students in the carpentry program, the electrical program, and there's a couple of the specialty programs in there that are helping us out with that, and we have had some support from the community as well. Donation of some steel that was done for the stairwell inside, some structural steel by Ashmont Welding. That building, we hope to have finished, I said this last year, but we hope to have that finished and completed by the end of the summer, and will really help us out with a lot of relief on the station building that we have now. So we're looking forward to that being finished. Recruitment, and so, as you know, we're a civil service community. Recruitment, the next civil service exam will be on June 12th. Applications to civil, to the state civil service unit must be in by April 20th. And I sent to all of you today a recruitment poster and a video that was done by civil service on our behalf earlier today. Just to give you very briefly what that will encompass, we won't see the scores from that exam, even though it's given in June until September. We would typically do background investigations. So when you're talking about hiring somebody, even if you decided today as a council that you wanted more police officers, I would not be able to appoint anybody, even as a part-time, permanent farm system, if you will, until this time next year, and then the process would begin in finding them a training police academy and field training. So even if you decided today, this is the problem in policing, I've mentioned this throughout my tenure here as chief in the last 10 years, you, to find a police officer, a replacement police officer for somebody who retires, is a year to a year and a half project, even if we said okay today. And so as part of that, I should also talk very briefly about police cadets. We have three police cadets. Those are our personnel, they are non-sworn personnel who support us mostly in dispatch and desk operations, and we started this in 2019 and been very successful. We have hired all of the police recruits, excuse me, police cadets that we have employed in the past, and they go through 911 training, they work on the desk and support what takes place there with a police officer. They learn a lot, and so far, we've done really well. We're five for five, so program is working very well, and we hope to continue that into the future. Next is enforcement and equipment grants. I sent this over earlier. We, Nitsa Municipal Road Safety Grant, we received $25,000 in the fall, and the deployment period really goes through September 1st of 2021, and the real focus of that and those grants is for police officers, additional patrols for drunk driving, impaired, distracted driving, and neighborhood speeding issues. That money is allocated at specific times of the year, according to EOPS, they want specific functions during specific times. So, that's very much appreciated. It's funny, but it doesn't go quite as far as you would think, but is, is a good thing for the community, and, and we have been doing those right along since probably, you know, November, December. So, we also were fortunate, we got a Burn Justice Assistance Grant, this goes back into the fall, and that was $20,000 we received, and replaces officer fitness equipment, which as you know, was vital during the last year for a whole variety of reasons, especially with gyms being closed. And officers here, I'm very pleased to report, by and large, very good about recognizing the importance of fitness and being able to perform their jobs. K-9 grant, we also received a $15,000 grant from, it was, if you recall, it was, I think it was March 6th or March 7th, last year, the week before things, the gears really came to a branding halt, Molly's Annual Best of Dog Fundraiser, and they raised over $15,000 at the vets club. And if you recall, Molly's a young lady who, when she was quite young, asked her mother to support canines in the area rather than getting presents, and through the years, Stacy and Molly, Coin, have run this fundraiser, and we were just lucky to be the beneficiaries. As a result, we were able to, to train a second K-9 handler, so Officer Christopher Rondo and K-9 Edo, they went through training in the fall, and they graduated at the end of December. So we, we have a K-9 support program during the daytime hours, that's Officer Rondo, and we've had a K-9 handler here for many years, Senior Officer Steve Kingsley, and he's on his second K-9, K-9 poppy. They work the night shift until about 3:00 AM. So, we're very pleased and very fortunate to have received that grant, and that grant not only paid for the K-9, paid for training, equipment, equipping the cruiser, but also kennel at the officer's home as well. Juvenile diversion grant, as I've mentioned, we have a, previously, we have a, we're fortunate to have a grant, we have a full-time clinician. It's a cooperative grant between East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, Middleborough, Whitman, and BSU PD, and our clinician is Katrina Lee. She works full-time. The only downside is that we share her amongst the communities, and she is a mental health and substance abuse clinician, and so we make referrals to her when she's not working, and when she is working, we actually bring her to scenes when, when it's necessary. Very valuable asset to us, and we would like to continue doing that. That is a 100% grant through the Department of Mental Health. It is a year-to-year grant, and, and so we're very pleased to have that. And so very quickly, I would just like to talk to you, over the last 12 months, you know, we've all been kind of through this, but I just wanted to give you a very brief timeline as to how things have kind of transpired here for the police department, and I recognize that everybody's had their struggles personally and professionally. There's a lot of people out of work, a lot of people that are hurting economically, and not only that, but emotionally and physically, it's been a trying year for everybody. But I wanted to put a little bit of context to it on, for the police department's side, and so I just very briefly just highlighted a few things, and so, if you recall, March 17th last year was a state of emergency, where things really kind of locked up. And, and at the time, we all recall that this was a virus that we didn't know an awful lot about, but we knew it was highly contagious and it was deadly. Really, all segments of our government in our society shut down in a variety of ways, and I would point out, that includes the systems that we were used to working with. Our court, court system effectively closed, and yet, justice still had to continue on. The people that were out there, police, firefighters, many of you on this call who had a variety of occupations, everything from hospitals and medical staff to grocery stores, which I think were vitally important. I can speak for myself, right? That's vitally important to me. But there were a whole host of other things that were out there that were, that were equally as important and continued to march, and it was an unprecedented, as we all know, it was unprecedented lockdown, business closure, and travel restrictions. But the officers here continued to work. I had absolutely no staffing problems. Very few people took time off of work. These officers that were here, are here, have committed themselves. We had a few officers who were in police academy training, and that, I cannot tell you how crazy that was trying to get them through this police academy training. But chronologically, officers, not only was it a difficult time, but officers made time that not only when this was taking place, they went out and they placed flags on Memorial Day. So rather than letting Memorial Day just, just disappear, as I know we were all kind of anguished about that, and, and it's such a significant day in our community, in many communities, officers took the time, they went out there and collaborated with their veterans, Agent Roddy, and, and put out a lot of flags on that day. We had our citizens' police academy that was operating, unfortunately, we had to cut it short, but we tried to get it as far as we could during that time. And then, of course, you know, fast forward, as, as the disease and virus continued to peak, personnel would still come in, and then you want to add to that in the summertime, you know, and on Memorial Day, with the murder of George Floyd out in Minneapolis. I can tell you that that happened a long ways away, but it impacted all of us, not only in, in the anguish and disgust that we all felt by what took place. I issued a brief statement from the department on how we all see that. And again, it was, it was a difficult time, but not only did it, was it the incident, but it's all the things that took place. And I can tell you, we had personnel that were in many communities, because every community was impacted by that, probably rightfully so, in a variety of ways. But it also taxes those services to help people and to help make sure that whether you want to protest or you want to counter protest, that in this country, you have the rights to do all of those things, and quite honestly, it's our obligation, it's law enforcement, to make sure that everybody can do that. Everybody has the right to do those kinds of things, whatever their persuasion or political opinion. And so that, that oftentimes put us in the middle of things, and, and as I said to you, because everybody had this problem, as a consequence, we had people, not only did they have to make their commitment and come in and perform their function here on behalf of this community, but they were in many other communities, helping police do the same thing and ensure that everybody has the right to go and do that, and, and exercise that disgust and disappointment and anger as, as quite honestly, we should, and we had to go out there and make sure that everybody could do that safely and peacefully, and we did it in many communities, and many of our personnel did that. We are, all of our law enforcement council regions, and we're part of Southeastern Mass Law Enforcement Council, were tasked to go to, to many different places. So our personnel were really taxed, both physically and emotionally during the summer, and of course, as you remember, when you get into the fall, you remember, we had a, a second wave that really started to come back on all of us collectively very hard. But I, I, I would notice that, I would note that, you know, at Thanksgiving time, normally, we have our Thanksgiving dinner for seniors, where we host upwards of 180 seniors at the senior center for free meal, and I want to thank the BSU Fred Clark and the college for supporting this dinner for us every year. And this year, our personnel, not only were they not able to do it in person, but they were asked to deliver those meals, and we delivered 280 meals to seniors this year for Thanksgiving, something we were very proud and pleased to be able to do, but nobody, nobody paid these people to do this. This was something they recognized that was really important. I'm proud they did it. As you know, we also, we also do a road race, the police department does a 5K and a one-mile kids fun run, and we've been doing it for the last seven, eight years with Rebecca Kahler directing it, and we weren't able to do that for obvious reasons, but the Bridgewater Police Foundation, and some board members are on this call now, stepped up and still made a donation to Project PAC, and Project PAC is a local initiative by a couple of young ladies who are very big domestic violence advocates, and Project PAC is, is a, is a project to distribute post-assault comfort kits to victims. I would also then talk very briefly about elections. We know that it was an uncertain and chaotic election period, something we had to be prepared for, a whole host of issues, and I appreciate what the town has done to make sure that the elections and, and make sure that they were run efficiently and effectively, and there was a lot of planning and preparation that went into that, to make sure that that, that happened, and, and of course, we had personnel in a variety of places supporting all of our neighbors and community partners to make sure that happened. Then, of course, we then led into police reform in a time of, of a lot of questions and a lot of uncertainty, dealing with reform, which, which by the way, police reform, there are certain aspects of that that are, that are welcome and necessary, and so it's, it's not all negative. There are a lot of challenges that, that policing will encounter in the future because of uncertainty and unknowns and, and uncharted territory. And so that was a big issue in the fall, and then of course, a vaccination rollout, which appeared to come to the community's front doorstep, and then, you know, it was backed with the state, and although this is, you know, it may, there was some loss of confidence, I think, in how that And although this is, you know, it may, there was some loss of confidence, I think, in how that was rolled out. I would also say, and I experienced this as, as, as just one department is that there's no, there was no book for this. Nobody told us how we were supposed to plan, prepare and get this together and do it efficiently with something, a virus that we, you know, we knew little about. So it's a difficult, definitely a difficult time. And then we got into 2021, which we all thought would really start to, to, to change our fortunes once the vaccine and started to make its way around. And of course, that wasn't going to be the case for the police department because we had frozen pipes in late January and early February in the building. We had a failure of our mechanical control system. And it did, it did water damage in several areas, including exercise room, our use of force, training simulator room and an archives room. That damage is still being corrected now. And, and of course, there, in the use of force simulator, that's something that I believe the town manager will be putting forward in short order about replacing our firearms and use of force training simulators. You know how important that is? And certainly important in modern policing, make sure that all of our personnel are trained effectively. So I look forward to that and the, as a capital issue. Just as a wrap-up of the year, just so I, I bring this kind of conclusion for you. About 25% of our personnel at one time or another were infected with the virus. So we had a number of times where personnel shortages did impact us at a, at different times. Of course, we also had some retirements in the last year, in the last 12 months that have severely impacted us. Captain Tom Schlotz retired, Detective Joe Demora, and also Officer Kyle Montagno went to a federal agency. And we expect three more retirements in this next fiscal year as well. We were able to replace staffing-wise those officers. So we made some promotions during this time. Unfortunately, you probably didn't hear much about it because we really, we couldn't have a promotional ceremony. So there was really little fanfare that was involved. Lieutenant Colin McDermott was promoted to captain and executive officer. Detective Sergeant Robert Bailey was promoted to lieutenant operations officer. Sergeant Ian Schuster was promoted to lieutenant and administrative officer. Officers George Zanletto and Jack Hennessy were both promoted to patrol sergeant. We did hire some new patrol officers as well. Officer Theo Barbeto and Nick Mantelos did manage to complete the police academy after a prolonged period and some serious delays back in the summer. And most recently, we had Officer Ryan Swart and Nicole Sheen completed their police academy training in December. And so in conclusion, I, I would just, I hope that the information I provided to you was helpful and to the community as well. But I really would like to just stop for a moment. And although there might've been a lot of material in what was supposed to be an update, I, I wanted to do justice to the men and women that are here. And I did speak briefly about what they've done. I have the good fortune. I am the, the face, if you will. But the work that gets done here by these men and women every single day is something I'm very impressed with. And I want to commend and recognize the men and women of this department. They've been tested physically and emotionally over the last 12 months. And they've proven themselves more than worthy. At no time did our doors close ever. And no call ever went unanswered because we didn't have people willing to go out there and do what they had to. You can look for yourself in our news blog and on our webpage, you'll see there are a number of incidents on everything from gun incidents to stabbing, investigation of vehicle, bicycle, pedestrian fatalities we've had this year, search and rescues, drug seizures, foot pursuits, search warrant executions, disarming of an individual with a knife and even a baby delivery. And I'm proud, me personally, I'm proud to serve alongside such devoted police officers and true professionals. I think we owe, and I know I do, I owe them a debt of gratitude for the character they've shown and the commitment they've demonstrated to this community. And we've been tested in the past and we will be tested again in the future. The last 12 months made it very clear to me the caliber of people that we have here. And I recognize it's my job as the chief. I'm supposed to say to you, there are a lot of positive things. Well, I, in the last 12 months, if there were any doubts, and there weren't in my mind, but if there are any doubts, the guys, the, the men and women that work here have proven themselves. And I would just like to say thank you to all of them. I try to do that as much as I can. I don't feel that I, I do that often enough. But they really do deserve all of, all of that and more. They've really been tested both physically and emotionally. So with that, I would like to conclude. I'll answer any questions. Let me just say, I, I want to thank the town manager and our finance director. And I would like to thank all of you for your support that not only have you shown us recently, but through the years as well. I would really like to thank you for that. We cannot accomplish our mission without you. So thank you. And if anybody has any questions, I welcome.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Oh, sure. Thank you. Um, Chief, you talked about certification of the department. How many departments in the state are actually certified as you, as our department is?
So there's a two-step certification process and believe it or not, certification is the first phase of it. We achieved that in 2015. Right now, I think this is an estimate on my part. There was about, it's under 20, it might be about 18. And then the full accreditation is about 90. I think it's 91.
Great. Have you seen any difference in the last year in, in the types of police incidents that you've had to deal with?
Well, I would certainly say that the mental health and substance abuse problems have not lessened at all. And so I, I'd probably say-
Do you think they've increased?
Proportionally, probably. So the call volume at one, as you, if you remember back in March and April, you know, everything was really locked up tight. And so we, we see our serious call volume drop. But I would say proportionally, the number of calls that we're getting has always increased for the past several years in, in a variety of ways. Proportionally, the number of calls that we respond to that involve mental health or substance abuse proportionally is much greater.
And, and just my, my last one, Mr. President, you noted that there'll be, there, there'll be several upcoming retirements and you noted that it takes a year, year and a half to get those filled. So should we start planning now in this budget process to start going through that? Make sure that those positions are going to be filled, that we're able to get to where we need to and make sure the, the department stays fully staffed at the current levels. I, I know you have a plan that, you know, is a great plan and would be awesome to implement one day, but but, but let's, let's, let's talk in reality first and then we can talk about where we can get to one day. Okay. Right? So I mean, what, what, what do we have to do as a council to support you in, in, in backfilling those retirements?
Yeah. So excellent question. You know, retirements, you know, they do occur. I can tell you that I have been, I've been put on notice that in the next fiscal year, I expect not only will there be retirements, but there will be high-ranking officers. So it's not just a matter of replacing personnel. It's also a matter of replacing longtime experienced and ranking officers as well. So we, this next year, and I've had a good conversation with the town manager about this, what we expect for the coming year. And that doesn't include those unanticipated ones. I know of three, one is a civilian, a professional staff member and two others, ranking officer. And then quickly after that fiscal year, another high-ranking officer. So in the very short order, we're going to see some significant loss of experience is the way I would, I choose to put it.
Any other questions? Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Chief. That was an amazing update. I, I think I may have carried the cascade here by asking about the grants. West Bridgewater had been in the news by pulling over people on cell phones that were inappropriately distracted. And I know years ago, you had talked about a rotation of grants and things like that. So it's, it's good to hear that all that and much more is, is in place. I, I do want to thank the department for the past year and more because, you know, you guys, men and women have done an awesome job throughout. And I also want to say, you know, as, because we're still in the middle of the budget process. I think over the years, the communication and planning has improved dramatically. And I think that's a, a strategy on your part and the, and the department's part of the town manager director. And it's, you know, when it comes to filling open spaces or in the, you use the term farm team. We talked about that a long time ago. You know, planning is a 12-month process and, and you know, it works out well. But yeah, the, the main point here, and I'm glad you talked about it, was the grants and, and the efforts for public safety and how you make best use of those. And thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? I actually have two, Chief Delmonte. One is, do you foresee the need to expand the police force due to our resident, our projected residential growth? Is there, do we bump up against what the state requires us? And that, and that could be true for also fire. Do you, maybe in the next two or three years, could you envision actually being mandated to, to add positions?
Well, I, I don't know the answer to that question. What I can tell you is, and I have, again, I recognize there's a difference between what communities can afford and what they require sometimes. What I would say to you is a community like this, and I don't just gauge it based on population and, and geography. I mean, we certainly have a fairly large area which impacts, you know, response times and things like that. There's a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of metrics that I would put into it. I've mentioned for a while that to, to be a, a police agency that remains proactive. And this is an issue that will become more of an issue in the future where maybe economics are not as favorable. And as of course, as a consequence, crime rates change. And as you know, part one crime in, in the United States, generally speaking, is down. And that's through proactive efforts of policing and a variety of other, you know, when economics is better and there's a whole host of things and where education is, is, is got good investment. There's, there's a lot of things that go into that. But I would say to you that this community, my, my advice and recommendation, whether the community is able to do that is you should, this department should be a size of about 50 full-time police officers. You know, you have to take into account, this department not only answers calls, and as I said, it's, it's 28 square miles. So there's, there's some ground to be covered. But remember, we have a full-time police officer who is, is on the desk. And to be honest with you, that's an advantage to this community. The police officers that are on there are not only the experience, the communication is exceptional. They handle calls. We do the EMD, emergency medical dispatch for instructions. Guys, I can tell you, you know, they have made a difference. They make a difference. It's not to, not to say that other civilians are, you have plenty of professional people out there can do it. But I can tell you, in this community, it's an advantage, but it's also a burden. And, and another dynamic that I noticed that's taking place is, you know, now it used to be where we have residential areas. You know, you'd have a, you know, development of 100 houses or maybe, you know, 20 houses and so forth and so on, that would be kind of spread out. What's taking place now is we have a couple of very large developments on one side of town, on the outskirts of town. And that has impact on patrol sectors and response times. And there, you know, there are about 600 units out in the west side of town. And if I need to get from the fifth floor of one of those units, or I have a Donnybrook that's taking place on the fifth floor and I need help, and I have somebody who was out at Nick and Angelo's at the Halifax line, that's, that's the kind of issue I'm talking about. It's not always going to work that way. But those are the kind of issues that, that go into that calculus when you're talking about. So my recommendation is this, the police department should be at the 50-man and woman staffing complement.
Okay. And second question, without betraying any confidences, the, the officers that, or, or the staff that's going to retire, is it, is it within their plan to retire this year or has the last 12 months kind of accelerated that? I, I ask this more out of curiosity than anything else, because as you pointed out, since day one, you guys have been open for business and under some, you, as you said, you don't have the book on how to police in a pandemic. So I'm just more curious about it. Do you, do you feel, or have they said, maybe they've accelerated because the 12, the last 12 months have probably felt like 12 years?
No, I've accelerated retirement talk. I don't know about anybody else, but no, no, no. Truthfully, that was part of their, I, I, I think honestly, that was part of a plan. Some of it has to do with where they are in life, years of service, et cetera. They're known to me now because they, you know, they, they have a plan in life and maybe they're in some, you know, you have a spouse that's retiring and, and that was always part of the plan. So I, I, I don't know that the last 12 months helped. But I, I don't think, I think this is something we have seen coming. I do have one that was unanticipated that I expect by the, in about eight months. But I, I think it was probably on the horizon. You know, there's some that tell you, you know, some, some people have a, a plan and it works out for them and they're able to say to you, hey, on this date, I'm going to go one year from now. There are others who are perpetually kind of, you know, maybe this year. And then sometimes it doesn't materialize. There are three that I know of who have formally notified me that they will retire in the next 18 months. So starting July 1, in the, in fiscal year 22 that you will be debating, I will have three. Two of those are sworn officers who are rank, high-ranking officers and one is a professional staff member, which again, has been known for a few years. So it, it has not been, I, I don't think it's been dramatically impacted by last 12 months.
I appreciate that. And I'll also convey on behalf of the town council, when we get back to norm, I know you've got a retirement, you've got retirements coming up. We have a lot of retirements this year. So we will do everything in our power to recognize those people that have served the town for a long time. We just don't have the capability to do it right now.
No, I appreciate that. And I, and, and many of the police officers here recognize that. And, and as I said to you, you know, it may be me that's doing it as the representative, but I can tell you, we all feel and are appreciative of the support that we receive, not only by the town council and the town manager, as I've mentioned, but the, the people in this community have demonstrated that support of us over and over and over again. And it, and it shows itself in a variety of ways. Sometimes it's helping with something small. Let me give you an example. Back in March, as, as we all experienced, you know, we did not have a lot of personal protective equipment. Okay? We had some things, but we had nowhere near what we thought we were going to need. There were, there were some local ladies and, and I will, I would like to come in front of you at some point and be able to recognize them in person. But there were several people that stepped forward and made masks for all of our police officers. And it wasn't one person. There were several people that did this. Some came in and donated bags of masks they had made so that if we went somewhere and somebody didn't have one, they wanted us to be able to give one out. And, you know, I, obviously polka dots goes really well with my uniform. But I can tell you, at that time, we would take whatever we could get. And it sounds sad to say, but that was the reality of it. We had a, a lot of people that stepped up in the community to help out. Some it was food, some it was cards, some was the kids came with different, just a whole host of things. And the one thing that I would like to get to is a state, you know, we talk about getting to a place of normalcy. I'd like to get to a stage where I can recognize these people who stepped up for us, who didn't have to do it. And they went out of their way to make sure that we had what we needed to continue to do our jobs. And that's the pub, that's the public support I'm referring to. Many people did this and continue to do it. And it's a very humbling experience, something that everybody here, we all see it and we all appreciate it greatly. And that's what keeps you going is because you know, there are just so many good people in this community. That's why, that's why you made the commitment in the first place. You know, we're people, we have the right to work wherever we want essentially, right? You don't like it here, you know, you move on, you go to another community. All of these, the people that we have here have committed themselves in, in a whole variety of ways. And if, if they weren't, if they weren't sure about it, or you weren't, or we weren't sure about it, they certainly demonstrated that to you in the last 12 months. But a lot of, a lot of people in the community that I and we want to thank a, a little bit more formally than we have so far.
Fantastic. Alrighty. Thank you, Chief Delmonte. Appreciate the update and be careful out there.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you. Alright, moving on to town manager report, Mitchell School update. Mr. Dunn? You're on mute.
Thank you. I gave my entire report on mute. I did, before I get into the Mitchell School, I just wanted to add one thing the chief didn't mention, but I think it's important that the council know. They're actually one of, you know, when, when officers retire, sometimes it's a matter of aging, getting to the required, there's, there is a required age for, for police officer firefighter retirement in Massachusetts. So quite often that, that, you know, we know about those retirements because obviously we know, know ages. So that was, that's another fact. On the Mitchell School, construction, as I've reported, has begun. The past- On the Mitchell School construction, as I've reported, has begun the past couple of weeks. There's been some additional demolition, specifically remaining existing foundation, for the most part, is, is what they've been working on. Over the next couple of weeks, they'll be placing new foundation forms. They have also done some additional site clearings. Erosion control is required under contract. Put down some, some riprap for, for, make sure that they keep our streets clean. So the riprap loosens the mud as, as trucks leave the site. So, so they're doing their best to keep our streets clean of site debris. And just general site prep and grading. So work has been going on quite diligently. We are pleased. I can tell you that internally, we're pleased with, with the work this particular firm does. They seem to be quite confident. So, so that bodes well for the project, I think, at this point. On the budget side, the good news is, I think everybody knows that, that we had seen about a twelve million dollar savings in the bid results. And the good news is that we believe that most of that savings will accrue to the benefit of the town and not only a little bit to the benefit of the MSBA. So, so that is, that's actually exceptional news for us. So we are estimating that our actual reimbursement rate, which is just that, the actual reimbursement rate, will be more like forty-seven point eight percent, almost forty-eight percent, versus what we had previously estimated, which was about forty-one percent. So that, that is really good news and just essentially a function of more of the burden or less of the burden being placed on the town and equal burden, roughly equal burden being placed on MSBA. So that's good news. One item of note, we did have increased the technology and the FFNE budget lines. They are up slightly. Each of those is one point five million, up from one point two and one point two-five respectively. That reflects current estimates of the cost of technology and building outfitting, mostly in a COVID, COVID-impacted environment. So we won't know the exact figures, obviously, until those things go out to bid. But those budget line items have been increased slightly. There have been some neighbor concerns, specifically with quite well, questions about the eventual site lighting, how, how the school will be lit, what the spillover from, from lighting will be on to neighboring properties. Also concerns about surface water runoff when the, the school is finished. And also the planned retaining wall, which, which runs one side of the building and goes from a grade of about one foot up to a grade of about twelve feet. Those concerns have all been, I believe, successfully addressed. The OPM on-site has, has been very good keeping the neighbors informed of, of the, of the process. So, so good news there. Still, and, and on the lighting, just so you know, all of the lighting is designed to, to not spill over at all into, into neighboring properties. So that's a, essentially a requirement. Timeline still looks good. Projected completion date of twenty twenty-two, July of twenty twenty-two, and move-in date of late August, September of twenty twenty-two. I can tell you, we are awaiting the final numbers, the numbers that, that we've been, that I've been mentioning in the budget reductions are based upon the OPM's estimates. Those numbers actually come from the, those final numbers come from the MSBA. So, once we have those final numbers, as I've said for quite a few weeks now, once we have those final numbers, we'll put the, the tax count calculator back up on the town's website, so people can see what, what the drop in the construction cost is really going to mean to them individually as taxpayers. Next meeting, Monday, April twelfth, at six thirty PM. And again, any information people are looking for, www.bridgewater-schoolproject.com. You can get all up-to-date information right there. And I believe there are some pictures being posted as well of the site for those that are interested. So that is what I have on the Mitchell School. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Dutton, you're talking about the town accruing more savings than the School Building Authority. There are certain costs that the School Building Authority just tells you, you can't, we're not going to give you any dollars toward that. Right? And then there's certain dollars where they say, well, your square footage cost is X. That's what we're going to reimburse you on, even though construction may have gone crazy and gone way over X. So they say, alright, you know, this is the percent we're going to give you of X. But it's not the percent you get of your cost. Could you talk about, a little bit about which of those is driving the difference?
I can't. I, I haven't actually seen and been able to analyze the, the quite extensive spreadsheet that MSBA uses. But I can tell you, based upon having seen that spreadsheet, obviously in the planning stages, the, I believe the biggest factor is the reduction in the square footage cost. So the square, you're right, MSBA will only reimburse three hundred thirty-three, up to, I think, three hundred thirty-three dollars a square foot. Almost all construction, new school construction far exceeds that. So, so I, I believe the biggest driving factor in the reduction of our expense, if you want to call it our town expense, is really based upon the
Right. And, and then that makes, that makes the most sense because we'll give you X percent of a fixed number. And if the fixed number comes really way down, it's almost like, and I hate to bring my work into, into town council business, but working in dental insurance, if you go out of network, the dental insurance company says, we'll pay a hundred percent of your cleaning up to a certain amount. If your dentist charges you more because you're out of network, you got to pay the difference. And so, and so now, if the dentist all of a sudden is bringing the costs down much closer to what the insurance company is willing to reimburse at a hundred, you pay a lot less as a percentage of the total bill, right?
That's a, I think, a pretty darn good analogy, correct?
Yeah. So, so, and, and, and truthfully, I mean, I want to give a huge amount of credit to you, to the, the School Building Committee, and everybody involved in this. And COVID to a certain extent, because we hit exactly the right time to put the bid in. I know construction costs are rising incredibly right now. And, and we got in at the right time with the bid and, and were able to save the taxpayers a whole bunch of money. So kudos to everyone.
I appreciate that. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that a lot of the driving the cost down depends on the quality of your plans. And our architect, RDA Raymond, Gene Raymond, Raymond Associates have done an exceptional job with the plan. So if you have solid, tight plans, then a contractor can look at them and give you a solid bid. And so, so that, that's definitely what happened in this case. But I also think that we've been the beneficiary of, of really good timing, so.
Alrighty, any other questions? Okay, moving on to COVID nineteen update.
I don't have too much on COVID nineteen. We do see really good declining infection rates in Bridgewater. We, we hover around the thirty current active community cases. BSU currently has about seven, well, exactly seven in quarantine or isolation. And we have now been a yellow community, as classified by Formula State uses, a, a yellow community for, for the past two weeks. And, and we've seen infection rates now drop well below five percent. Two weeks ago was three point one. I think it's two point nine currently. So, so that's great news. We have fully opened town hall for business. Obviously, we're continuing to follow the protocols that were in place the last time the, the town hall or the academy building was open. And, and so we are open for business. Anybody, we have been open for business, but just by appointment or by electronic meetings or virtual means, but now fully in person. I do encourage people to follow the protocols, obviously. And anytime any citizen can do their business, either by phone or, or by any one of the number of different ways that we can be communicated with, I do still encourage that. But we do have a couple of departments that are, have been impacted by COVID. So we try to cover them, but there may be times when the expertise is not actually sitting in the office for those, for some of those, a couple of those departments. So I just forewarn folks about that. We have, we are completing our, our supply of vaccine, depleting and completing our supply of vaccination on the second round of vaccinations this week. As I think the council knows, this will end our role as an independent vaccination clinic operation as the state has announced that it will not ship vaccine to local communities with the exception of twenty luckier communities. But we, we are in phase two, which includes seniors now sixty-five and over, teachers and others. But we will not be operating a local clinic since we cannot receive vaccine from the state. So there are no communities in our area who are operating local clinics. There are communities that are finishing off things that they already started, as we are this week. But, but they will not be opening up individual community clinics. I can tell you, we, we continue to work with other area communities on holding some sort of regional or having some sort of regional vaccination solution. But at this point, I don't have any positive news or positive update on that. So, so that's where we are with COVID.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Mr. Dutton, I, I thought I read something that Bridgewater State is going to be administering COVID vaccinations. Am I correct on that, or did I misread that article?
Excuse me. Bridgewater State has secured evidently permission from the state to, to, I mean, in terms of, of COVID vaccine, you know, a couple of weeks ago is like a decade ago. But they did receive authorization to have a clinic that would basically vaccinate students and folks otherwise related to BSU. It, it essentially was the equivalent of a local community vaccination site. They don't, they, they don't have the vaccine to, to do that. We are working with them on, on trying to develop a regional solution that would, would be palatable to the Department of Public Health. And if that, if that comes to pass, and that's a big, big, big F, then, then BSU campus and, and more likely into the summer would be used as, as a potential vaccination site. But that, that is a ways off in, in many, many ways, so.
Yeah, I, I, I would hope if that's a possibility, we could take advantage of that. Because even though we aren't getting vaccine shipments for local distribution, we still have people in Bridgewater who are not mobile, who don't have local family, that don't have access to technology, that don't have access to transportation. We, we can't control what CBS does or Walgreens. I mean, I think even down the road, we're going to need to help those people get the vaccination, that vaccine that they deserve. So I, I hope we are able to continue the partnership of always done and be able to not only help the staff and, and students at Bridgewater State, but also, I, I'm not looking for them to, to vaccinate everyone in Bridgewater. But as we had that identified group of people that desperately need it, I hope we can, we can do something to, to help them out.
I fully concur with that and, and would endorse that a thousand percent. I do, the, the one thing I do want to make clear is that we are very, very, and I think, you know, I'd speak certainly for all the, you know, both chiefs and, and all the folks that join us on the emergency team calls every, every Tuesday and Thursdays. We are doing whatever we can to make sure that the people of Bridgewater have access to some sort of vaccination site that's not Foxborough. So, so to the extent we can do that, and to the extent that we can provide Bridgewater residents that alternative, we will. Also, to the extent that we have to go in and provide vaccinations to folks that are homebound, we are committed to doing that as well. All we need to do is make sure that we can secure the vaccines for those, those folks. So we, we are on top of it. You know, the, the lack of supply has been, you know, a real, a real showstopper, unfortunately, so.
Alright, thank you. Alright, moving on to FY twenty twenty-two budget.
FY twenty-two budget, I can tell you that I, we get closer and closer to, to a balanced budget. We have worked fairly closely with the district. And, and I, I do want to give the district superintendent and the, the business, business manager at the district all the credit in the world. We've, we've really had some good productive conversations. And, and certainly, I think we'll be able to provide a, a budget that will meet the, what we now know is the district's assessment, our proposed assessment. And then we also believe that, on a different note, that, that we'll be looking at a capital, at the district's capital plan and hopefully be able to fund a good chunk of their reduced ask on the, on the capital plan as well. So good news on that front. Unfortunately, I don't believe the budget's going to include the fifty officers that Chief Delmonte's mentioned. But, but we, we continue to work with all the departments to make sure that we've got a budget that's, can sustain our work and, and carry us forward into the new fiscal year and address some of the priorities, so.
Can always fall back on the lack of qualified candidates, which is nice.
Well, I will tell you that we do, you know,
I take that back. It's, I shouldn't say it's nice. I think it's just a rationale that we have for a little while. My apologies for the, for the wording that the wrong way.
Certainly apology accepted. I don't know if the chief will. I do, I do want to let the council know, because I think it's something that we don't really talk about a whole lot. But when we, when we fund a department budget, we want to make sure we fund the positions that we know we need and that, that we can sustain. So, you know, and certainly maybe not the chief's case this year, but in, in future years and in past years, you know, when we've got a position, we need that position, we fund that position. If we cannot find a candidate to fill that position, it doesn't mean that we pull the funding the following fiscal year from that position. Because if we did that, quite honestly, you know, you, you wouldn't have anybody working at, at the highway department or roadways department or the water and sewer, because those are very difficult positions to fill. And we continue to fund them, and we will fill them, those positions. But, but we don't play around with the funding for specific positions once they, once they are an integral part of the, the process. So that's been our policy, and I think it makes for, you know, we, we have to be very disciplined about how we approach the budget. But I think that's the best way to address it, because it allows us to, if we consistently do that, allows us to weather the storms without, without putting undue pressure on the departments to, to try to, you know, come up with more and more budget cuts. So that is, that is what I have on the budget, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. Dutton, the last thing you said piqued my interest the most, actually. Because a lot of towns, a lot of town meeting run, finance committee run, not finance committee, but you know, like advisory board with, like we used to have town meeting. The feeling of every department was, if we don't spend it this year, they're not going to appropriate it for us next year. And it feels like you're trying to get away from that to say, we're going to fund you at the appropriate level. Whether or not we can find the people to do the job, you'll have the funding there when we get the right person to do the job. Is that, is that a better, is that a, is that an appropriate way to say it?
I think that's an appropriate way to say it. I think, I think the, what we've tried very hard to do is make sure that the, the town operates as a team. You know, we're not, we're not in the business of pitting departments against each other. I've, I've said this before, if you look at, you know, pre-town council days and go back a few years, you know, you'll see a dramatic swing in funding from, you know, one year it'd be police and fire. Police and fire would get a lot of funding and the schools would get nothing. Another year you'd see the schools would get a whole lot of funding and the police and fire would get nothing. So, so that's a function, you know, that's, that's the unfortunate. You know, drawback to, to, you know, sort of the, the old town meeting, open town meeting form of government, you know, some, one person could stand up and sway the whole crowd. I think we've been very, very careful and very diligent about making sure that, that we operate as a team. We're all in this together. We're not going to penalize a department for, for not spending or not being able to spend because we've certainly been in that position for a number, a couple of years now. Certainly with the places I mentioned, you know, water, sewer and roadways. The last thing we want to do is penalize those folks for not being able to spend the money that's budgeted to them.
And so, and so going back to those two particular departments, to the extent that water and sewer can't hire. A position, it exists in the budget and therefore the money's not spent, but that's a, that's an enterprise fund. So that goes into the water and sewer surplus, correct? And then they can, they can use that in other ways. However, on the roadway side. If they, if, if they can't hire somebody, it goes into, it goes into essentially free cash. And therefore it's, it, it, it was unspent money because we didn't hire a person we thought we would, would hire or ought to hire. But it, it just rolls into free cash. And so. We, we get a lot of that. Free cash, well, not a lot, but we get free cash from, from that aspect, correct?
That's, that does result in some, some level of free cash. I mean, we got free cash from a bunch of other sources.
Right. No, but I'm just saying that that's one source of it, right?
Correct.
So, and so then. And, and then if you could just, again, once again, because you can never hear this enough and Tony's not here, so you've got to replace him. Talk about the revenue sharing formula and how you work with all the departments and the unions within the town. To be able to say, okay. This is the amount of money we have. We, we, we're, we're open and transparent. And we, we're doing this through the budget process as well, correct?
Absolutely. So, so we have, we, we analyze our revenues every year. And that, that analysis usually starts, you know, well before. Well, soon after the fiscal year starts, we start to analyze the, the, the revenues that we're, we're receiving in and the revenues we've received for the prior fiscal year. So we have a really good idea of where, where we, where we will see increases in, in revenues. Once we establish those increases, we establish an amount or a percentage that, that we know. That we can share with the, the district, for example, and share with, with the town department. So we, we are pretty adamant about maintaining, you know, that revenue. You know, sharing number right across the board. So nobody, nobody is shorted, nobody is, you know, ripped off, so to speak. And we are upfront and, and very. Willing to share that information with the departments, with the unions, with the, the, obviously the district is, is the most important. Component there because they're the largest piece of our budget. So. So I think, I think that you hit the nail on the head. We, we. We are as fully transparent as we could possibly be. If there's a way for us to be more transparent without being. Mind numbing, I, I take any suggestions, but I think, as you mentioned, the finance director, Tony Solanti, has done a great job. Of being able to establish those numbers early enough in the budget process so that we can be very. We can share, share those numbers and we can have productive conversations with, with the, you know, all the departments, but certainly with the school district. And get, get to a sort of a consensus on the, on the. The assessment, you know, our annual assessment.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Mr. Dutton. So the revenue sharing applies to almost all revenues. Is that correct?
Almost all revenues, correct.
Right. I mean, we talked about the veterans benefits is not being shareable because it's, it's basically. And I'm, I'm looking for an email. Couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the, the taxes from the Home Depot. I think it was around two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Is that right?
That sounds about right. It's been a while since I've looked at that though.
So if we had another big box store show up in Bridgewater, we would expect an increase in our tax base. Of about two hundred and forty thousand dollars into the revenue stream, right?
Sure.
Sure. I noticed.
It depends. I mean, it obviously depends, but for the sake of argument, I would say.
For sake of argument, I noticed this year compared to last year. That the, the revenue from the marijuana host agreements jumped from about a hundred and fifty thousand to. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, which is close to the taxes of a Home Depot. Can, can you explain that jump for us?
Yep, I, I believe that jump is the phasing in of the mitigation agreements that we had signed. And so. As, as any marijuana, medical marijuana or recreational grow as we have in Bridgewater. Requires or has required a mitigation agreement. We've established an amount under that agreement, a minimum amount of payment and then. A, a maximum amount essentially based upon the, the percentage of sales. So. So some of those increases are, you know, those agreements starting to phase in. Especially on, on the one facility that just opened, a, a ACS maybe. That's relatively more recently opened. So, so that's, that's essentially where that revenue is, is coming from.
And that's revenue that's a split value. So about half of that goes to the school assessment and half of it goes to town operations.
That's, that's a, that's one, a revenue that we do share, correct?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. If anyone has anything that they'd like to discuss for the next meeting, please let myself and Mr. Dutton know. Okay, moving on to discussions, open meeting law, committee presentation account to town council. This was brought up by myself. So. I think I, I got some feedback after our last meeting that. That there were committee members that were told that they could not. Come to the council meeting and participate in the presentation because of open meeting law and. I, I found that personally very disappointing that we would keep anybody away from a meeting. Especially volunteers that are working to better Bridgewater. And I think those, I mean, we want everyone at a meeting, but especially for a presentation, having a committee there to be able to answer general questions. Give feedback. So I did reach out to. Mr. Dutton and, excuse me, Attorney Rollins, just to talk it through because. As I think we could, we would all agree that open meeting law, even though we take annual compliance, is still something out there. That a lot of people struggle with, including myself. So. Two things that have come out of that is one, what I talked to with Attorney Rollins came up with, and I think was a great idea, is in the future. When we do have a committee that's coming for a presentation. We'll ask them to, to post it as a meeting and it can be a very brief streamlined agenda for that meeting. But it helps us cover the bases around a potential open media law violation. Now, obviously within the agenda, it has to be in the confines of what a presentation is and things of that nature. But my personal opinion was if they do not talk about things that are within their discussion, what they're going to be voting on. That they could participate. And I think under, out of an abundance of caution. Attorney Rollins said, we post it as a public meeting with, within the agenda and we cover ourselves from there. So. You know, from that perspective, I'll, I'll work with Ann, I'll work with Mr. Dutton, we'll work with the committee members so that. If, if one person wants to show or the entire committee wants to come, that they don't feel like they're potentially going to violate open meeting law. But again, they have to understand what can be discussed. Also, the council has to understand the type of questions that are asked. So that again, we're not going down the path that we may have an unintended consequence. Of violating open meeting law. And I've always asked Attorney Rollins. To make sure that if we are going down that path, to speak up and keep us from going down there as well. And again, you know, I would open that up for any committee. I just want to be able to be transparent and invite people to participate from there as well. The other thing is. Mrs. Hunt, as our town clerk, has also sent me some resources that I think. Need to go out to the council for us to have a better idea of what open media law is, what it isn't. I, I always joke back to the days of just the Mitchell presentations. We, you know, we kind of did a little poll to make sure that we didn't have too many counselors within a presentation. That turned out really not to be an issue. We were all there as residents, as taxpayers. For a presentation, you know, well before the building committee came into play. But even I was of mindset that we had to make sure we didn't have quorum there. So. You know, more to come on that in regards to getting the resources out as well. Any, any questions on that? Mr. Wood?
Thank you. So, so last year we set up the idea that periodically we'd hear from the chair of the committee for a report on what's happening. The last one we heard from the chair of the planning board. I just want to make sure maybe through you to, to our town attorney. If we set up an agenda, but a quorum of the committee isn't there, can the committee chair still provide that presentation that we were looking for? Or, or does that have to be closed because now there's not a, a quorum there and, and we've lost that, that ability?
No, you, he still obviously can provide whatever information as the chairperson of the board. The reason for potentially posting a meeting is if there is a quorum by chance. And the remaining members of that committee or board intend on answering any questions. That the chairperson is answering or to supplement answers of the chairperson. In anticipation that many of the issues you all are going to be interested in asking them about, maybe things that are currently in deliberation. So. It, it's really just to cross the T and dot the I, absolutely a chairperson. If there's no quorum, there's no need to call a meeting. Right? It just is like anything else that's posted on your agenda. The meeting is going to be posted. Within that agenda in case there is a quorum and in case. Based on that quorum, you all have conversation with other members of that board. Or communications with other members of that board in that context. I'm not sure how this came about. It may be that some of the associate members wanted to talk. It may be that they didn't. I don't know. But under the way that you've currently been doing it, you're, you're fine. If it's just a chairperson. That's appearing and then the other members are appearing as citizens and have no intention on talking or deliberating on anything, then, then I think you're fine. You're not running a foul. My point was if there is some appetite for that. Or to allow some of the other members to weigh in and there happens to be a quorum of that committee or board there, it's better to be safe than sorry.
Yeah. And I guess my, my point, Council Wood, is let the committee decide if they're going to have quorum. If they are, if they are, we'll post it. If not. We, again, we may post it just out of an abundance of caution. I guess why I'm reacting to this is because, like, like I said. I, I just got some feedback that certain committee people were told not to come because it would be a violation of open meeting law.
Yeah, no, I think your point is well taken and I, I think in, tried to do this in the past, the way that the attorney recommended. So. It's a good point going forward. Thanks.
Right. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to. Go ahead, Mrs. Loesch.
We do have an orientation program that we had started at the end of last year. So whatever additional open meeting. Information that we have, I would love to have that be part of that process and even potentially put other places. So if we can get that shared out, that would be helpful. Thank you.
That is, that is my goal. That's my, I'm sorry.
If I could make a suggestion on that too, for Ms. Loesch, I'm not sure who's going to be working with that kind of orientation. It may make sense as new counselors come in. For certainly them to hear from me, kind of how I think, you know, some, some of the open meeting. Possibilities or the possibility of where you can run afoul of these things, just from a common sense perspective. Before they hop on the council, it may make sense for them to hear from me on some of those things. Could just be helpful and make their life a little bit easier in transitioning onto the council.
Oh, I agree. I think as you can see, a lot of familiar faces on the council. We haven't done it too often. But when we do, which I think we will for this next round, we'll definitely make sure that you're. I mean, whoever's going to be doing it, I should say, will be able to have you on the agenda.
Well, you all do such a good job with it that I, you know, I, I don't want to butt in. I just, I could maybe offer a hint here or there.
Experience would be good.
Jason, anyone that helps the president keep everyone on the straight and narrow is welcome. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Second one is communication between town councils and department heads. Again, I brought this up. So. In just the overall discussions of our last meeting, and I've heard this before. Just a counselor in general said that I'm not allowed to directly communicate with department heads. And during the meeting I had with Mr. Dutton and, and Attorney Rollins. You know, and I, I just said flat out, that's not true. We can communicate directly with department heads. You can ask department heads questions. You can give them information. There, there are some requirements that we can't do as counselors. That have to go to the town manager. In, in regards to employment and things of that nature, but I've never hesitated to pick up the phone and call Chief Delmonte or. Or call Chief Levy at the time or, or, or any, you know, the Board of Health or anything that. Communicate, call, things of that nature with things that have been brought up to me in my precinct, in general, asking questions. I don't feel that we have to put everything through the town manager. Now, in fairness, two things. Is one, what I do communicate with. A department head, I, I, I do put the town manager on and for the most part, it's, it's usually through email. But sometimes if I make a quick call, I'll let Mr. Dutton know and he's been great with it. And I just do that to keep everyone in the loop with the transparency, but I've never sat there and said, I'm not allowed to call someone because I'm a town counselor. So I, I, I would like for us to be able to, be able to approach that a little bit better. Than filtering everything that would be communicated to a department head. Strictly through the town, town council, I mean, town manager, excuse me. But again, as, you know, as Attorney Rollins pointed out, there are some parameters within that. But the free flow of information and communication between all of us, including department heads, I think is critical. And, you know, Mr. Dutton, I, I'd like just a little bit of your feedback on this as well.
I think, Mr. President, you framed that pretty well. I do think that it's, it's helpful. Well. I mentioned, I discussed earlier today with somebody else that we've got so much going on. And there are so many different things, the initiatives that, that are ongoing. That, that to have me be the, you know, the bottleneck or, or the. You know, having to disseminate all the information from the council to, you know, or, or to, from council committees to the respective department heads. Doesn't make any, any sense. So a good example. Community and Economic Development Committee, you know. Has done a little bit of work on, on zoning recodification. So having, you know, a conversation with me about zoning recodification. Really doesn't make a whole lot of sense if I have to then turn around and, and talk to Ms. Burke, our, our director. About what, what a counselor said on the committee that she actually sort of staffs. So. So a free flow of conversation between the committees and, and the respective department heads makes all the sense in the world. All our department heads know by policy what, what interactions that are acceptable. With counselors and what are not acceptable for counselors. So that's, that's my issue to take care of. But, but I think in terms of what, what Mr. George is saying, I think it's perfectly acceptable. You know, certainly if you have a. What's a good, you know, if there's a. what's a good, you know, if there's a, some constituent has called you and said, hey, there's a massive pothole in, in my yard, you know, I, I'm happy to take care of that, but you, you can just as easily reach out to the, the highway roadway superintendent and say, hey, you may not know about this, but this needs to be fixed. And, and that's, I'm perfectly fine with that because that's, you're acting on behalf of a resident and you're doing something that, that you would do as a resident yourself. So, so I have no, no issue particularly with that at all.
Any questions? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'll defer to Mr. Wood.
Mr. Wood?
Thank, thank you. I just want to share for me, what has been a best practice, I think has worked well, which is I, I may end up having a conversation with the police chief or the highway department or, or something else, but I, I often go to the town manager first and say, hey, you know, I'd like to call Chief Del Monte and discuss, you know, something about the training program. I don't need the town manager to jump in and, and be a filter between us, but I do want to make sure that he knows I'm going to call the police chief. So later on, the police chief doesn't call the town manager and say, hey, you know, Counselor Wood called me and ordered me to hire 15 new officers or, or something like that, right? So it's always the, the, the relationship between the legislative branch and not just the executive, but the operational side that we want be clear of the perception that we're not trying to order the department to do something. And so I always lead that with a call to, to Michael, just to say, hey, I'd like to talk to, you know, the finance director about, you know, the, whatever. And it's always worked out very well for me. I don't know if there's to.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
If I may, and I completely agree. I, I know, I, I can't say I completely agree. I generally agree with your idea. However, the town charter actually says, and this may be where the charter commit, committee comes in and can actually amend it and, and make it work. But it says right in section two, six, something, something, "The town council shall deal with the officers and employees serving under the town manager solely through the town manager and the council president shall not give any orders or directions to any such officer or employee either publicly or privately." And that's what it says. So I'm, I'm not here to debate the wisdom of that sentence, but that's what we are actually working under. I defer to Mr. Rollins on that question. And then I have something else I want to say after Mr. Rollins opines on that.
So I, I don't disagree that there are very specific limitations on what the council's role should be in talking with employees of the town. I think there's, that's undeniable. I think the way the charter is split up, the town manager handles the employees of the town and manages them and the town council essentially manages the town manager. So I, I do agree with that. That being said, there are circumstances whereby it would be permissible and I think very useful for counselors to discuss things with department heads. For instance, if one of you are drafting legislation and you have a question about a zoning area.
I'm not asking what might be useful or not. I'm asking you to interpret that sentence of the charter.
That's exactly what I'm doing. So.
Okay.
But, but, but to, but to get to it, I want to give you an example. If, if, if there was a circumstance like that, then you asking that information, gathering information or giving information would not run afoul of anything that you just mentioned in the charter.
Solely, solely through the town manager. What does that mean, Mr. Rollins?
Well, it, it is, it's solely through the town manager as it relates to those items in which you were referencing, right?
"The town council shall deal with the officers and employees serving under the town manager solely through the town manager."
As their employment is concerned, I absolutely agree with you.
I didn't read employment in that. I'm sorry.
If you look at, if you look at the section of the charter that references what you're talking about.
Yep.
It's very specific to employment.
So, Mr. Fitzgibbons, how about?
I'll trust, I'll trust him on that one.
How about we leave it this way as well? If there's any ambiguity, go to Mr. Rollins, ask him if it's okay.
Yeah.
And if he says it's okay, go from there.
And, and as I said, I agree with it. But I just want to remind everybody on the council that when we talk to a department head, we are only one person talking to a department head. We are not the council. We can't speak for the council. We can't say, I, I, well, we can say, but I wouldn't recommend it, that we're going to bring this up at the next council meeting if you don't do X. That would, that would not be cool. And.
And that's, and that's, that's exactly what I said we wouldn't be doing in regards to instruction. These are conversations. These are reaching out to department heads. I'd, I'd also say too, that if a department head felt that there was something going on in a counselor's precinct that they wanted to make him or her aware of, they would reach out directly to the, to the counselor as well and not feel that they would have to go through solely the town manager. So, and, and I agree with you, Mr. Fitzgibbons, it's gray area. And like any other time we have gray area, we reach out to Attorney Rollins and he is very responsive in giving us the parameters on what we can and cannot do. And as he said too, hopefully the Charter Review Committee can make some recommendations to clear that up as well.
That works for me. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to adoption of mission statement by Town Council Committee, I'm going to turn this over to Counselor Chase. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. This topic arises out of recent meetings that the Strategic Planning Committee has conducted over the past month or so in connection, in fact, with establishing town manager goals, which is a subject that we're going to speak to tonight a little later under Legislation for Action. But the topic is, is one of, well, let's put it this way, our, our committee was reorganized and we three members are, are new to the council, are, are new to the committee, I should say. And even though some of us have served previously on a, on a prior Strategic Planning Committee, but the topic really arose out of a discussion about what should be, what is the proper purpose and function of the Strategic Planning Committee. Obviously, we're meeting at the direction of the council to discuss the need for legislation concerning town manager goals, which we've done. But I think we were looking for a larger frame of reference in which to sort of encapsulate our, our, our duties on that committee, our responsibilities. And so the question arose whether there is or whether there should be some type of mission statement, I think is the simplest way to put it, that just very briefly articulates the scope of responsibilities of the, in this case, Strategic Planning Committee. In fact, we, in speaking about it, we, we spoke further about whether all potentially of the town council committees might have a need or a desire to set forth a, a statement of their purpose. We felt that one of the benefits is that it really gives a certain clarity to, to the committee. It, it refines our focus, kind of reminds us of what we're really there to accomplish. It also helps the council to understand what matters are most appropriate to be sent to the committee for our consideration. And finally, I think it absolutely is helpful to the citizens who may not have a great understanding of the nature and the, and the role of the committee structure and, you know, wonder a little bit about what, what type of activity, you know, any particular committee is actually engaging in. So this is really a, a discussion, maybe a discussion that we should continue after, after we have some time to think about it. But we want to at least present this as a, an opportunity to consider whether adopting a, a purpose statement for, for a committee is appropriate. And by the way, we're not, we're not in doing this, we're not seeking to try to embellish the, the responsibilities of any committee, but it's really just for purposes of clarity and, and focus. And I'd welcome any input on the topic that anyone might care to offer.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
If I, if I might, and I'm sure Mr. Wood will have other comments after I'm done because he's thought about this a lot more than I. We have a set of rules and procedures or where we actually set up our committees. And it would be great to just amend those to say exactly what you're saying, Mr. Chase. This committee considers matters, ba, 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 whatever, whatever needs to be said so that everyone knows it's right there in the rules and procedures. Everyone understands, you know, the, these type of things get referred to that committee. This is what this committee does, et cetera. I'm, I'm just offering that as a suggestion more than anything.
Mr. Wood?
I think this helps. Or anyone else who?
Yeah, yeah. I, I'll just add to that. I've read things. Actually, you know, what Counselor Fitzgibbons was saying was, was exactly right. And that's where our discussion was, which is, you know, if you look at the charter, there's a number of committees mentioned in the charter. I, I don't have the page in front of me, but standing committees, right, of the council. And then that gets pulled into our rules and procedures of, of the council. But nowhere does it actually say exactly what the mission of strategic planning is all about. I mean, we have economic development and, and community development on one hand, and we have rules and procedures someplace else, and we have budget someplace else. But what is the committee like, like the strategic planning actually responsible for? So it's exactly the trajectory we want, which is all the committees should come up with a short mission statement. We, we put one together, the three of us, you know, in draft form. And we should try to, to forward those into our rules and procedures as a description of the committees so that it's useful, as, as Counselor Fitzgibbon said, useful for new members of the council, members of the community, that sort of thing. And, and as we work through that and, and kind of codify the language, you know, there might be ideas from other people outside of the committee that might add to the value of, of the mission statement itself during that whole process. So that's, that's the idea behind it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Let's see. Yeah, I'm on. Just, just quickly, Mr. President, I mean, Counselor Chase is, is correct. I mean, we discussed at the Strategic Planning Committee and, and Counselor Chase drafted a potential mission statement for, for that committee. So I guess it would be okay for a committee to forward to the council a potential mission statement for that committee and then be referred to rules and procedures for some sort of formal adoption. I think that that might be, I think that would be okay if, because I think what Mr. Chase put together, I think fits the mold of what the strategic planning should do. And if something is missed, rules and procedures can, can pick it up. But I, I think that, I think having a mission statement or something like that built into the rules and procedures for a committee is would, would be the way to go. So I think your point is well taken, Counselor Chase.
Any other questions? All righty. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. Any committees like to give a report? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to Legislation for Action. Order O F Y twenty-one dash zero three one, establish town manager goals. At their meeting held on March second, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the Strategic Planning Committee voted three oh to recommend approval of this measure with proposed amendments. This measure may be finally considered this evening pending the consideration and adoption of any proposed amendments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the main motion first.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. I was going to correct myself. We've got a second. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
No, then I'd like to make a motion to amend as indicated.
Second on that as well. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions on the amendments?
No, thank you.
All right. Mr. Wood?
Yeah, so last year, and I mentioned this to several people, last year during this process, I was not on the council. But I was watching the meeting where the council adopted the, the goals of the town manager. And it's similar in form here, which is the original, the original resolution went out to committee. We were, you know, they worked on additional language. It came back as an amendment. The amendment was adopted and it moved forward. The, the problem I noticed and, and, you know, I'm probably was as close to the process as anyone else. I had no idea what the council adopted. I couldn't find the language of the amendment anywhere. Last year, it, it clearly, it actually said this page left blank and that's what was on the agenda for the meeting. I couldn't find the, the amendment. I, I don't think I want to suggest that we, we read them because it's, it's, it's a long document, but we'd like to, to see if we pass this tonight, that the adopted language, even in draft form before the thirty days or whatever the process is, it's up on the webpage, on, maybe on the town manager's page. So that people have easy access to it and can see the exact language of, of what was worked on and what was produced as a work product. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hi.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yeah. It's more of a comment. I know depending on which committee you're on and, and the chair, minutes usually have those details and for the goals that we produce for the past year have always been in the minutes and have been explicitly in the notes. So I think it's just, if it, the website is the issue, that sounds like it's a technical one versus information not being there. So hopefully we can get that rectified so folks can know ahead of time to get the information they're looking for.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so we are voting on the amendments. This requires a roll call vote to accept the amendments.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Okay. Moving on to accepting or, excuse me, approving the order as amended, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to Resolution R F Y twenty-one dash zero zero five, S E R S G, inter municipal agreement, reauthorization and amendment. At their meeting held on March, held on March second, twenty twenty-one, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three oh to recommend approval of this measure. The Finance Committee met on March eighth, twenty twenty-one. Their disposition will be provided upon receipt. The measure may be finally considered this evening pending disposition of the Finance Committee. My understanding is the Finance Committee voted six oh to approve. Am I correct on that? Anne?
That is correct.
All right, Mr. Dutton, thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move. Second.
Okay, second. All right. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Chase?
No, none.
Any other counselors? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Moving on to Old Business Ordinance, D F Y twenty-one dash zero zero six, General Ordinance, Ordinance, amend administrative code, part two, article three, section seven and sixteen. At their meeting held on March first, twenty twenty-one, the Rules and Procedures Committee voted three oh to recommend approval of this measure. This measure may not be finally considered until subsequent requires advertising. I will entertain a motion to send to. until subsequent requires advertising. I will entertain a motion to send to advertising.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Souza, any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None, thank you.
Any other councillors? This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Do not have any new business. Moving on to citizens' comments. I would ask for any citizens who would like to comment to keep it within three minutes and please state your name and your street for the record. Are there any citizens who would like to comment? Mr. Beal?
Hi, my name's Keith Beal, Tenfield Crest Drive. The first thing I wanted to comment was, I want to thank Chief Del Monte for his presentation. The accolades that he gave out for his, the men and women that make up his department are absolutely warranted and have been shown year after year after year. What he failed to mention is that that kind of performance is driven by the leadership. And I think Chief Del Monte, with every accolade he gave about his men and women in his department, could be given to him in his performance, not only prior to be in chief, but now as a chief. And it all really stems from strong leadership, especially over the last twelve months. He's a very humble man. And so I just wanted to, as a citizen, make sure that he got the accolades that his, his men and women got and it's all deserved. The second comment was based on the application for the lodging house. While I understand it's important to have the petitioners there, I do think that there might, there were citizens that raised the issue about whether it was even legal. Councillor Wood brought it up also with a paragraph three, whether it was even legal to have a license at this, at this place. And the person that raised that question was here tonight. And I don't know if, I know he raised his hand to try to interrupt and, and couldn't, but I just felt we should have addressed his question about the legality tonight so that he doesn't have to wait a whole nother month to find out, you know, exactly what the question he raised was. You know, there was a lot of people here. They all jumped off as soon as the, as soon as the, you know, that, that it was moved to, to, to continue. But I just think that he had a direct question. He was here to get an answer and, you know, to move that is, I just, I just don't feel it was fair to him. And that's just one citizen's opinion. Thank you and thank you for your service.
Any other citizens who would like to comment? Dr. Hunt? Dr. Hunt, we can't hear you. Sorry, Dr. Hunt. Can't hear you. Nope. All right. Are there any other citizens who would like to comment? And do you see anybody?
No, I don't.
Okay. Moving on to council comments. I will start with councillor Gallagher.
Uh, nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Okay. Councillor Loesch?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Chase?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick thank you, if I may, to Chief Del Monte. I'm always intrigued by his presentations. They're always extremely thorough and very factual and informative. And I appreciate his taking the time to spend the evening with us tonight. Thank you very much. And by the way, if I may also just quickly, you know, we were, we're seeing many, we're seeing relaxation of some of the COVID protocols that we've lived under for the past year, which is certainly welcome news, but I think, you know, we, we don't want to fall prey to jumping the gun, as it were, and discarding those practices that have really been so instrumental in getting us to this point. And I hope that people will continue to bear in mind the need for social distancing and mask wearing, et cetera. Uh, I feel sure they will, but with the relaxation of the requirements in some respects, it would be easy to kind of fall, fall, let, fall aside. Thank you.
Councillor Wood?
Oh, thank you. First, congratulations to councillor Motion, her husband, for a wonderful news she shared tonight. That, that's just absolutely amazing. I, I've been through, I've seen her family tripled since I've known her. So that's incredible. Um, I was thinking, as we were talking at the beginning of the meeting, you know, the, about the fact that we've been on Zoom for quite a while now. And I think Sean, you were reading that the, you know, the, the governor's exception to the open meeting laws and such. You know, we've participated in committee meetings under Zoom as well. And, and I found those to be actually very productive in the first couple of years of the council. And many people may not know or remember this. We had a lot of debates over whether to record using B T V, the committee, the committee process. And so now we've been online here for almost a year and committees are recorded and anybody can go on the, the town of Bridgewater YouTube page and see exactly what happens in strategic planning or another committee. I think that's actually beneficial. So, you know, obviously there's no action to take right now. But I think, you know, once we return back to normal in, in twenty twenty-five or twenty-six, hopefully not that long, but that maybe, you know, we do the, the full council in person, but maybe we consider asking to, to the committees in a Zoom-like presence so that, you know, we can still get that same. I find a lot more people are, are involved in participating than when we do it live and they have to come over to the Academy Building. I find that the, the comments are usually more than, than we've seen in the past. And I think it's just a little more interactive at, at the committee level. And it's something to think about that maybe going forward, we, we continue the practice at the committee level if we're allowed to do that. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Souza?
I just wanted to thank the chief coming with this for his presentation this evening. And that's it.
Councillor Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the chief as well for his presentation, very informative as always. And I, I don't think, I think in my time on the town council, the best thing, the best vote I ever cast was to, to appoint you chief. And I'm not just saying that because you're here. I, I really do believe it. But the other thing that he unfortunately came, came to the council with tonight was Officer Batello's passing. And I have known Officer Batello for over thirty years and coached his sons in baseball. His daughter was my youngest brother's swim teacher at the, at the pool at the college. And my heart goes out to the family and the extended family that he had, and certainly to all of the Bridgewater Police Department who knew and loved him. Mike, I'm going to miss you. Thank you.
Uh, just a couple of things. Again, thank you very much, Chief Del Monte, for taking the time to make the presentation. I agree with, excuse me, councillor Wood. Congratulations. This is Loesch. Councillor Rushton is, is not here tonight. Unfortunately, his dad passed away. So if I could ask everyone that is watching, if they could keep his family in your thoughts and prayers, I think that would be appreciated by him. All right, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session under M G L, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and to adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
All right. This will be a first.